Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Here.
Man.
I am present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Pastor Dewayne Jones from Living Water Worship Center will do the invocation. Good evening.
Spirit of the living God, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the men and women who make up this great council, our God. Father, we thank you for Lancaster, California. We thank you that every task they may embark upon, Lord God, that you would give them the right mindset to make tough decisions, Lord God. Father, we thank you right now, Lord God, that you will bless them from the top of their heads to the soles of their feet, Lord God. All those on the sound of my voice, Lord God, we thank you in advance, Lord God. We serve you right now. We give you honor. We give you praise. And, God, we thank you right now, Lord God, that you will bless this city, Lord God. Bless this nation. Bless this state, Lord God. And we thank you for those who are here, Lord God, that you would give them the peace of God that surpasses all understanding, Lord God, and, God, that keeps their mind girded on you. And, Lord God, let every word of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in your sight, you being our God and Redeemer. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen. Thank you. Maria. Which one's Maria? Would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then afterwards, you can do your speech. No, I'm kidding.[121.03][121.03](Laughter).
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic and which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[144.22][144.22](Laughter).
The Miss Latina page acknowledges Latin U of simultaneous. What are they doing? You know, you keep expecting people to rise to a level of maturity as they get old, and what I find is they actually drop.[200.56][200.56](Laughter). Have you seen that, too? If you haven't, I want you to pay close attention to those three, and you will.[208.12][208.12](Laughter).
You know how to be on time, though.[212.62][212.62](Laughter).
Some of us actually have jobs, Marvin.[222.31][222.31](Laughter). Some of you need it.[226.62][226.62](Laughter). The winners will serve as ambassadors to the AV Latina community for one year. Ambassadors participate in parades, community events, as well as coming to city council meetings, right? Okay, and we have some certificates for you, and we'll do some pictures also. Maria, come on up.[248.37][248.37](Applause). Haiti? Come on over here.[344.94][344.94](Applause). Sorry, what? Sure, come on.[446.31][446.31](Laughter). It's not you, Joe. It's me.[449.31][449.31](Laughter). Be more specific. Okay, thanks, guys.[452.31][452.31](Applause). City Manager, any items to be removed?
No, sir.
Any speaker cards for the minutes?
None. Motion to approve the minutes?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Consent calendar. Any items on the consent calendar?
CC-12.
CC-12? Anything else?
Motion to approve that consent calendar is currently comprised, pulling CC-12.
Second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on to CC-12, which is emulsified asphalt materials. Fran, come on up.
This emulsified asphalt material is not what we're talking about, right? Now, is this a thin slurry type of thing that's going to be put on top of the surface of the paving, or is it a thick substance that's going to be put on the pavement? The reason I'm asking that because, as you know, the streets that they've already done, they only put a thin coating on top, and the cracks are coming through already again. So, that didn't work.
The materials themselves are for a variety of uses. Some you can have slurry seal, fog seal, some would be a thicker overlay. The ones you're talking about are a couple of the early attempts at traction seal, which we had talked about, and we've gotten since better. If you look at Avenue G, that is a true representation of what can be done. So, these are materials for the Revive 25 program throughout the year.
Also, I was going to mention, will they be a little bit better supervised as far as the work, the quality of the work that they're going to be doing? Because they got a little messy the last time. They didn't go to the curves properly. They just slapped it all over the place.
The answer is yes, that will not occur. Some of them, primarily, these will be contractor work where our inspectors will inspect it. Some of them will be our own work that we do, too, with our own crews, but they'll also be inspected.
Okay, good. All right, thank you very much.
Sort of begs the question, why was it a mess the first time?
Well, the one that I believe Fran is talking about is we were experimenting with one of the early applications of traction seal, both with the contractor, the person we had a license, and we've since perfected it. And again, if you go out on Avenue G, it's very tight and very well done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Fran.
I didn't even say hello, council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, but hello, everybody.
Motion to approve CC-12? Is there a second?
Second that.
Second that. It's unanimous. Okay. CB-1? Any speaker cards?
Speaker cards.
I want to do it anyway. We'll hear from Barbara Boswell and Jason Codel. Oh, and Mr. Bozegian, too. It's a full-court press. Let's pay close attention. There's a reason there's so many people down there.
Well, welcome.[708.12][708.12](Laughter). Mayor Paris and city council members, it's a pleasure to be before you on the budget. There's a couple of changes this year. Number one, it's, and first and foremost, it's a two-year budget we're proposing to you for '16, '17, and '17, '18, and you'll hear about that in a few moments, the reason for that. For the public's benefit, because you have all been briefed and been involved in development and such, this takes many months of staff time and also working with council throughout the year to develop priorities, and you'll see those throughout this budget document. You're going to hear from myself, from Barbara, from Jason, then I'll wrap it up a little One of the first things, as you'll notice, as I said, it is an opportunity to look more realistically at what we do. We have a lot of firsts in the country, firsts in the state projects. We have a lot of things we do that span a couple of years, and a two-year budget allows you to be more consistently planning, funding, and operating those priorities. You will, of course, as a council, have the opportunity at mid-year, any time throughout the year, and before next budget year to be able to change and revise the budget if you would like. Want to briefly highlight a few initiatives, which I think or I know are important to the council. First and foremost, we have an ongoing commitment to public safety. It's the single largest budget item, but it's more than that. The reason I think that, in the face of a lot of adversity, this council's been successful, is active involvement. We don't just write a check and say Sheriff's Department, go fix it. We have the most active booster club in all of Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department territory, raises the most money for equipment. We have a council fully that involves themselves in all aspects of public safety, and the mayor is always on top of it. In fact, just recently met with Sheriff McDonald. So, public safety remains number one. A couple of new initiatives you're going to see. One is a smart city initiative. Now, I don't pretend to know everything about smart city. I know it's a buzzword right now, but we were challenged by the mayor to become a smart city. We've been researching it, and I guarantee you one thing: We're not going to talk about it. We are going to do it. And essentially, it's using data and using information out there to better form city services.
Well, wait a minute. We're a little concerned that you're uncomfortable with the word "smart."
It could have been "city" or "initiative," I was uncomfortable with.
Smart, it was smart.
Maybe. It really is something that where cities are going. You'll see this throughout the presentation. What we try to look at as a budget in this council, this is a budget and a roadmap for the future, not the past. Medical Main Street, Councilmember Molly's been leading the charge on that one, and that, in my opinion, is the most important project that we're involved with right now. I think it's going to change the face of medical care in this community, and it's an economic generator. We will be acquiring our streetlights by January 2017. That's fully about nine months before we'd anticipate it, so that's going to be done. We've talked a little bit in the last speaker with Revive 25 that's in here. One thing we're particularly proud of is we were challenged by the council and mayor to come up with a Citizen Leadership Academy, and you will see that over the next few months being presented to council, and we will be hopefully launching that in January. One of the things about a city that's different from a public company is cities are a trust. They go on forever, and because they're a trust, it's up to the council, staff, and everyone that's here to leave it better than we found it and create an engaged community where there's opportunities for people to rise to the top in whatever area they're going to help the city. And we're putting a lot on this Leadership Academy, and we think the community will be proud of that. Again, this budget positions us for the future. It's a balanced budget, and now I would like to introduce Barbara, and she will explain this sort of odd picture here.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and commissioners. Tonight's budget, as Mark mentioned, is proposed, we're proposing to you a two-year budget. This graph depicts our 2014-15 actual expenditures as compared to the current year of '15, '16, and the two years proposed. The large change in the budget is most specifically due to Lancaster Choice Energy. That's the city's Community Choice Aggregation Program, whereby the city procures and resales power to its residents and businesses. In addition, we have a fairly significant capital improvement program that is budgeted over the next two years. The '17-'18, the last bar, it's a little deceiving. It looks like our budget's going down. It's not actually going down. It's because our projects are budgeted in one year, and they span two years, so all of the money is in the first year, even though we do it over two years. So, it's just to reflect that we have fewer new projects starting in the second year than '16-'17. Our budget is comprised of a number of different departments. This chart reflects all of our departments and all of our funding sources, not just the general fund. The single largest department is our Development Services Department, which is 22 percent of the total budget, with Lancaster Choice Energy coming in at 20 percent. For '17-'18, Lancaster Choice Energy actually then, at that point, exceeds Development Services. It becomes the largest at 23 percent, and Development Services, 16 percent, and Public Safety, 19 percent. And again, that's all funds, not just general fund. So, focusing just on the general fund, and the reason that we really do spend a little more time is the general fund, is this is where sources such as sales tax, property tax goes into where the city has sole discretion in how those funds are used. Most of the other funds we receive are restricted in terms of how they can be used, and we don't have much discretion in the utilization of those funds. In, over the two years, we are proposing to a budget that is balanced. However, in '16-'17, we are recommending a budget that does take $1.1 million out of fund balance to fund priorities for that year. However, in '17-'18, you'll see that our operations net a positive $1.2 million, so we're able to replace those funds. We do have sufficient funds in our general fund fund balance to cover the '16-'17 expenditures, maintain our 10 percent operating reserve, and in fact, also have, continue our financial stability reserve at 16 percent. We'll have total reserves of 26 percent, even after dipping into reserves to fund priorities for '16-'17. In addition to adopting the budget, there are a few updates to our fee schedule that we are recommending council approve. Those are adding fees related to connection to our recycled water system, ticket processor fees related to LPAC, and then we're updating two fees, I'm sorry, updating one fee, recycled water excess quantity, and then we are making adjustments to our fee schedule in order to reflect the proper municipal code section references. The fees are not changing, simply it's a change in the reference to the code that those fees are related to. And now I'd like to introduce or bring up our Deputy City Manager, Jason Codel, to talk about our capital improvement program.
As part of the budget, you'll also be approving a capital improvement budget for two years, which totals about $50 million. We're proud to say that a majority of that comes from grant funding, and I know the council has been very focused on pushing staff to identify other people's money, which is, I think, a unique opportunity. A lot of what we see in the grant funding is a result of the council's hard work, frankly. Marvin and Ken specifically regarding the interchange monies, demanding their fair share, and I think that's the key of what this council's been important to do, is getting those monies and saying, "We demand our fair share in the Antelope Valley," and making sure that we put that to the ground and get it funded. Some of the projects that we'll be undertaking, as I mentioned before, is the interchanges that we are currently under design and implementation of Avenue J, K, L, M, and G. So, in the coming years, the citizens can see much improved intersections. I think specifically Avenue K is one of our most troublesome, and that is where we've placed our highest priority, and we'll be working towards those interchanges. In addition, Jet Hocks is a picture up there, and that's not necessarily specifically the Jet Hocks is the greatest priority we have, but we're going to be doing some improvements at Jet Hocks, and that signals the fact that we understand that we have an aging infrastructure that needs to be maintained appropriately. You'll see improvements in City Hall, park facilities, Jet Hocks, and things of that nature. Understanding that facility's 20 years old now, many of our facilities are aging, and this is a realization that we need to reinvest in those facilities and make them, you know, last a long, long time for our community. And additionally, we have street signals, traffic signals, and traffic flow. Many of the projects you'll see on the streets are restriping, road diets, safety improvements around schools, a lot of those same construction projects you'll be seeing again, and that's really to focus on the safety of our road system. As you know, high speeds cause major accidents. Reducing lane size, reducing lane width, reducing lane traffic, and calming some traffic will hopefully increase that safety and that movement throughout the community. And of course, understanding that our road system is our greatest asset and most-used asset, continuing the funding for Revive 25, which has been a council goal, is the continued maintenance in the infrastructure of our road system. As you know, when people enter our community, when people leave our community, when people go play in our community, they always travel on our road system, and this budget reflects a robust improvements in that, again, with a $10 million improvement. And not to lose sight of the Revive 25 goal, which is to do some level of improvement to every street by 2025, which is rapidly approaching. So, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions and turn it over to Mark for closing comments.
Thank you, Jason. A couple of closing comments. Number one, the budget has been available on the website in a draft form for, obviously, public review, and it will be available after today as well. This council and this city staff and the whole community have looked at the future, not the past. When you look at Lancaster Choice Energy, that was an idea a couple of years ago. Now, it's a large revenue source. Streetlights will be a similar thing. Medical Main Street is looking at the future. We have some other things in the budget when we talk about the next 50, what we look at. But let me give one example, hopefully, for the public that you're all familiar with, but that you have to plan for the future, or you're going to be swept away by it. Something as simple as autonomous vehicles. Autonomous vehicles are here. Some cars basically drive themselves, but what does that mean? That's one thing that we have to look at in planning, and the Planning Commission has to look at. First off, you design roads primarily for capacity and safety. Autonomous vehicles change that. Think of a freeway. If you have two cars driving at 70 miles an hour, they have to have seven to eight car lengths between them. That means you're using the equivalent of 10 vehicles.
Would you tell my wife that, please?
I didn't say 120 miles an hour. I said 80 miles an hour. But if you think of that example, you have 20 percent of the capacity of that lane used at that point. If autonomous vehicles can drive closer together and safer, if you just doubled that to 40 percent, if they can go to four-car lengths or eight-car lengths, you've doubled the capacity of that road, which means you don't have to build as many roads, which is really expensive. But it gets further than that. What do you do with parking? What do you do? How do you design for safety? Autonomous vehicles, by their nature, are safer. We have to take that into account. For parking, vehicles now, in the future, are going to be either fractional ownership or shared vehicles. If you think about it, a commuter drives a lot, but their vehicle is not used 20 out of every 24 hours a day. A lot of us use our vehicles, it's parked outside all day. How do you make better use for that? You can fractionalize that in terms of ownership. You can send autonomous vehicles to run errands. I own one car. My children may own one-fifth of a car and share it with four other people they don't even know. Well, what does that do for parking? But what does it also do for sales tax? You know, if you're selling a fifth less, 20 percent of what you're selling now, how does that do for funding government and public safety? These are all the questions. They're not easy answers, but they're all the things that we have to look at, and one of the things that I'm proud to work for this city is we do look at that, council and staff. I know right now the Planning Commission is struggling with that. So, this is about the future. We're never going to rest on our laurels, but I think there's a lot to be excited about in this budget. It is a balanced budget, and we're proud to present it to you and happy to answer any questions you might have.
When do we flip out the streetlights?
January, we will own all of the streetlights by January.
When do we flip them out to LED?
Oh, right after that. We're already in the process of looking at how to do that, going out for bids and stuff, so we would be able to immediately start right after that. We're still looking at that. There might be the ability to do it while we're acquiring them, or if it makes more economic sense, do it once, but the plan is to do that immediately.
Okay. Mark, will you go over the process and explain that this isn't the first time we've seen the budget, nor the fifth or sixth time?
I can speak to the way our city runs. Our city runs where we have a very engaged council, virtually myself, and it's better be boring any other way. I see your smile. What we do is this council, every day, talks to someone about something with the city, myself, a staff member, someone in the community. So, I think we all have a pretty good handle of priorities throughout the year. The budget process itself, we get the money together, we get the fund estimates together, and then we start meeting with council, and we start talking about what is important. The Leadership Academy came out of something that the mayor had said, I think, about six or seven months ago. Smart Cities has come out of a similar thing. When we look at, I know that Councilmember Mann was particularly, road improvements were particularly important to him. I know that public safety is important to all of you. With Angela, we've talked a lot about how we reach out to businesses and how we support businesses. So, that goes throughout it. We probably have three or four formal meetings each time to go over it individually, of course, no more than two council members. We will then tweak it, put things in, and hopefully get to a point that we get to the priorities of the council. The important part to remember, too, this is simply a plan. It can be changed any time. Cities and counties that count their budget as ironclad don't ever improve because they always use it to say, "Well, it's not in the budget. We'd love to do it." We don't do that at this city. We'll change it. We'll move it. We'll bring it to council. And so, that's sort of our process. It works for us. The budget process itself, we get the money together, we get the fund estimates together, and then we start meeting with council, and we start talking about what is important. The Leadership Academy came out of something that the mayor had said, I think, about six or seven months ago. Smart Cities has come out of a similar thing. When we look at, I know that council member Mann was particularly, road improvements were particularly important to him. I know that public safety is important to all of you. With Angela, we've talked a lot about how we reach out to businesses and how we support businesses. So that goes throughout it. We probably have three or four formal meetings each time to go over it, individually, of course, no more than two council members. We will then tweak it, put things in, and hopefully get to a point that we get to the priorities of the council. The important part to remember, too, this is simply a plan. It can be changed anytime. Cities and counties that count their budget as ironclad don't ever improve because they always use it to say, "Well, it's not in the budget. We'd love to do it." We don't do that at this city. We'll change it, we'll move it, we'll bring it to council. And so that's sort of our process. It works for us in Lancaster, I believe. Sorry, sort of a long answer to the question.
Thank you. Where are we on fiber optics?
Fiber optics, we are, I can actually have Jason address that. I know we've started to map it.
Yes, part of the Smart Cities program is looking at our fiber optic network, understanding that changes that are going to be happening are going to be communication-based and telecommunications-based. So we're trying to wrap around a conversation about what our telecommunications services look like. The backbone to that is going to be our fiber optic network. We currently have a number of miles of fiber optic network that the city has in between its traffic signals. So what we're doing is mapping that, identifying new locations and expanding that, but also trying to understand how we connect that to the internet, right? The fiber that we have is connected to each other, so our communications can happen between our signals and our traffic section, but the, the connection that is going to be happening is connecting that fiber to actual One Wilshire. So we're evaluating what that looks like. We've, we'll look at a number of different consultants to do that. Once we have that connection, our fiber is now light, is live, which allows us to start connecting people, and we're, we're, at that, at that same time, we're evaluating how we connect those people, how we create a business around connecting people to get them high-speed internet and fiber to the fiber of their business, the fiber of their home, but also, as Mark talked about, some autonomous vehicles, some of the smart city concepts, how do we get internet, right, a Wi-Fi mesh? How do we get connectivity from our cameras and our street systems and things of that nature? So we can integrate all these different type of technologies to make it not only safer, but data-driven. And we're, you know, that's going to be our goal this year, is to get at least one customer on our fiber optic system.
Are we prioritizing it into the business parks?
The, the majority of where our fiber network is currently is in the core of, I don't want to say downtown, in the core of Lancaster. A lot of those businesses are already adjacent to it. So, you know, we will identify how that works. But yeah, the goal would be is to get it from an economic development standpoint, understand it from a smart cities technology standpoint, because a lot of these businesses, as you know, you know, is very data-intensive, and the communication between offices and, and places, internet directly to, or fiber directly to your business is a huge value. We hope to have this, we have, there's a challenge, we hope to have our first customer this year. Part of it is the connectivity of how you connect fiber, you need to connect to One Wilshire. How you connect that fiber from One Wilshire to Lancaster is the challenge in negotiating documents and agreements with shared fiber. The next would be actually physically connecting that business to fiber. So now that, as people are watching as we throw this out there, we hope to, somebody raises their hand who wants to be our first customer, that we can try to get them physically, because then you, we have to dig into the street, connect fiber from point A to point B and make that happen. So we hope to do that in this year.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
I'll move we adopt resolution 1634, 1635, 1636, 1637, and 1638.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
New business item one, climate action plan.
No speaker cards.
No speaker cards. Let's do it anyway.
Before you today, we were going to present the climate action plan. This is the beginning of a process of public outreach that will later culminate with your approval of the climate action plan. Before I get started, I want to announce our team. Dave Jones, Heather Swan, Jocelyn Swain. These three have done, huh? Oh, Matt Brown, sorry. Sorry, Matt. The, no, they're all dressed up. I didn't recognize them. The, the, they've been working diligently on providing this plan.
How does Matt normally come to work?
I'm joking. Okay, Dave's the one dressed up. The plan before you today is, is a culmination of a lot of work on, and, and their effort, and most cities do this, and a number of cities have done this with consultants. I'm proud to say that, you know, the group behind me is the one who put this project together. They did have some technical analysis from the, the emission control conversation, but the, the group that's going to be presenting today is the group that did it internally, and we're, personally, I know Mark and I are very proud of the work they've done, and they've not only saved the city a lot of money, they've put together a really good plan that we're, they're proud of and we're proud of. The, the key that we're doing today, somebody might ask, "What is a climate action plan?" Well, a climate action plan is, is a list of goals and objectives to help minimize the climate output or the carbon output of a community. It's analyzed, the data is taken into account, and the projects are, are hopefully implemented. What's different about our climate action plan that many other cities have achieved is, one, ours is not a regulatory document. This isn't a document that tells people how to operate. This is a guide, so if people want to participate, they can. It's also a guide, a guidebook or a map, so to speak, for projects that we would implement as a city. The other part of that, where, where ours is different, is every project that you'll see in this climate action plan is one that improves the community, that provides greater opportunity, that generates revenue, but also is good for the environment. A couple of the benefits for having a climate action plan, or why we're doing it, one is that, of course, we are, are leaders as relates to being net zero and, and climate action is obviously one of them, we want to, we want to share that story. Two is that climate action plan allows us, SEQA requires developments to analyze their greenhouse gas emissions. By, by approving a climate action plan, we then are able to streamline developments through the SEQA process that makes it better for the developer at the end of the day. And it also allows for certain grants and opportunities. So as we're submitting for grants, which, as you saw from the capital improvement program, we do this often, to say that we are, one, a leader in energy, but also say we have a climate action plan that's focused on reducing our climate foot, or our, our carbon footprint is a great story to tell, and in some cases, some of the grants require it to be approved. With that, I'll turn it over to the team to talk to you about what's in, in the climate action plan and why it's important, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Kristen, City Council. My name's David Jones. I'm going to give you a little bit of background about the climate action plan. Climate is usually defined as average weather in a place. It includes patterns of temperature, precipitation, humidity, wind, and seasons. Climate patterns play a fundamental role in shaping natural ecosystems and human economies and cultures that depend on them. Because the climate we've come to expect is not what it used to be, the past is no longer reliable predictor of the future, our climate is rapidly changing with disruptive impacts, and that change is progressing faster than at any time in the last 2,000 years. Both natural and human factors cause a change in our climate. Before humans, changes in climate resulted from natural causes such as solar activity, volcanic eruptions, and natural variations in greenhouse gases. Since the industrial area, the burning fossil fuels has added billions of gases to the atmosphere. These emissions cause a buildup of carbon dioxide and other gases in the atmosphere, which act like a blanket to trap heat, in effect, a greenhouse effect. And this has resulted in the acceleration of global warming, which causes climate change. However, it's important to note that climate is not weather. Weather is what conditions of the atmosphere are over a short period of time, and climate is how the atmosphere behaves over a relatively long period of time. The following graph that I'm going to show you shows the Earth's climate recorded in monthly measurements from land and sea over the last 135 years. Temperatures are displayed in degrees above or below the 20th century average. As you, as you will note, 13 of the last 14 hottest years have been in the 21st century. According to the International Intergovernment Panel on Climate Change, the IPCC, temperatures are forecast to rise between 2.5 and 10 degrees Fahrenheit over the next century. Many national and local economies are already vulnerable to climate events in the form of floods, droughts, heat waves, and tropical storms. The cost of climate change in local economies will be borne through repairing or upgrading infrastructure, increased energy costs, increased water costs, potential loss of real estate values, and health-related costs. As a point of perspective, this map of the world displays countries based on the relative contribution of greenhouse gas emissions to the atmosphere. As you can see, the industrialized northern nations are large contributors to this problem. Today, annually, 30 billion tons of greenhouse gases are emitted to the atmosphere. As a point of perspective, point of reference, rather, the city of Lancaster, though through community and municipal emissions, emits 894,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide annually. That's equivalent to roughly 900,000 of these houses going up into the air every year. I now hand over to Heather Swan, who would review some of the actions the city has taken to date.
Thanks, David. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is our responsibility to ensure that the environment is preserved for those generations who come after us, because we have not inherited the land from our parents, but we are borrowing it from our children. So what are we going to do about it? Lancaster has taken great strides over the years to begin the implementation of many different sustainability projects, such as adopting the master plan of trails, the opening of our very successful recycling center, Kaiser's LEED gold-certified facility, and AVTA's transition to an all-electric fleet. Additionally, the city of Lancaster has worked hard to become the alternative energy capital of the world, and has made great progress towards becoming a net-zero energy city. This road has been no easy feat, but with council's leadership and vision, the city has crafted unique and important partnerships, attracted vitally important business, and launched groundbreaking endeavors which have highlighted Lancaster in the global arena. So what's the game plan from here? As we move forward on this journey, staff has prepared a draft, project-based climate action plan to serve as a guide for suggested projects that will not only serve the community, but also reduce the city's and community's carbon footprint at the same time. This is a starting point to begin engaging the community and begin the conversation with our stakeholders. The climate action plan project began in, excuse me, November last year with the launch of the request for proposals. These proposals aided staff in selecting a qualified consultant who would be able to analyze the municipal and community-wide data, which was gathered in order to provide emission data for the projects and forecasts. And now I'll turn it over to Jocelyn Swain to describe the remainder of the process.
Good evening. Once data was gathered, a process of accounting for all GHG emissions arising from our activities began. This data included municipal and community-wide activities, such as vehicle miles traveled and energy used. These emissions were grouped into various categories for the purpose of quantification, forecasting, and eventual reduction. The data was gathered for both 2010 and 2015 in order to provide a clear picture of the city's baseline and most recent complete year. 2010 was utilized as the baseline year, as it was the first year after the adoption of the city's general plan in July of 2009. In March, staff from all departments participated in a half-day workshop to discuss ideas for the project-focused plan and provide insight into their daily activities and observations of the community. These insights were invaluable to us as we prepared the plan along with the suggestions of how the city and community could shrink its carbon footprint. However, this plan is meant to be a flexible, living document that changes what the community's needs and is able to adjust to the city's priorities. Today, we present to you the initial draft of the plan that, based on the greenhouse gas inventory results, is intended to be a roadmap for action, a tool for analyzing and prioritizing projects, and a partnership between the city, businesses, and the community to work together on solutions. Throughout this process, we discovered that the city has made significant progress in reducing its emissions through the activities we are already engaged in, such as reduced water consumption, increased adoption of rooftop solar by businesses and homeowners, and the launch of Lancaster Choice Energy. We are proud to announce that from 2010 to the end of 2015, we have already reduced our emissions by 12%. So where do we go from here? We will be taking this draft plan out on the road and to the community for input and feedback. Along with the scheduled presentations shown above, staff is also working to attend meetings of various community organizations. And with that, it concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't see any political element in this. Our community doesn't suffer greatly from pollution from the Antelope Valley. We suffer it from South Coast and the Samwekeen Valley. So how are we going to reach out to other communities with this plan that, to show them what we're doing and how we're doing it? And don't you think that part of this plan, we should have some type of political element in there to reach out to our representatives, our congressmen, those people to make sure that if we're going to implement this, that we're not the only ones doing this?
Correct. In there, one of the items is the Climate Protection Institute. The intent of that, that function is to do the outreach, right, is to be out there telling our story. One of the things that, that, you know, Jocelyn talked about and staff talked about is our, our accomplishments so far. So part of this, this document is hopefully an outreach as well. So in there, one of the, one of the items to accomplish is called the Climate Protection Institute, which is a nonprofit, to hopefully go out and tell our story, not only encourage other political bodies to get involved, but also to get other agencies to comply, but also encourage people to do the same thing we're doing, because I think we have a, a good, positive story to tell.
Okay, but you're, are we reaching out to South Coast? Are we reaching out to Samwekeen Valley to, because that's where the majority of our pollution comes from? We can, we can do this and implement this, and if we do, it won't affect us at all.
Yeah, that, that is the intent of that, that organization, is to do the outreach and get people behind us and supporting what we're doing.
Okay, and how are we going to do that? I, I don't understand that, that part of it.
Right. There's a number of ways to do that. You can outreach through communications, through studies and, and other services we provided. You can reach out specifically and contact individual board members. There's a number of ways you can accomplish that, but that, that entity has contemplated to do that. There is not specific ideas for exactly how to do that or who to contact. This is a general concept.
Are we going to reach out to the other agencies like the AVA, QMD, the AVTA? A lot of the stuff that we're implementing or was in this plan, like the BRT, is already implemented, the going all-electric has already been implemented. So are those, how are we going to, have we reached out to those other agencies?
This is the draft plan. We have identified partner agencies to reach out to, AVTA, AVA, QMD are those partner agencies. I'm sure there are others. A lot of what, some of the other transportation concepts that are in the plan, we're already doing or in the process of implementing.
Okay, I, I, I like the plan as it is. I just want to make sure that we can go back, amend the plan, and make sure that it's a guideline for us to use, and when we implement it for further use, we're creating partnerships, because I don't see this working without creating partnerships with surrounding communities.
You're absolutely correct. That is the goal.
Jason, do you remember the time I met with Public Health and asked them to come up with a, a way of dealing with our obesity program, and they came back with a walking program and my reaction to that?
I do.
I'm really struggling that I don't repeat that performance, all right? We are attempting to create a model for the entire country to follow, and I am hearing a staff who does not understand the causes of climate change, or understands it and is unwilling to or unable to convey the real reason for it and why this is not a cyclic event, and why it is not caused by the internal forces of volcanoes, things of that nature. Climate is something that occurs over a long period of time, and it is caused primarily by the tilt and the orbit of planets. by the tilt and the orbit of planets around us, and how that alters our orbit in relationship to the Sun. The reason why we need to know that and make certain all of our people know that is because if it was cyclic, if it was just a cycle, we would be able to predict exactly where we are, and we're unable to do that. What I'm saying is I'm disappointed that what I saw in there was not the real science of this at all. And yes, there is a blanket effect, and the greenhouse effect certainly takes place, but why is methane so much more volatile than carbon? I mean, those are questions that are not hard to answer, but if our citizens don't understand them, they don't understand what we're doing. And what I'm concerned about is our staff doesn't understand it. Am I clear about that?
I understand completely.
I want this staff to be experts, experts, in all of the ramifications of climate change, because we are investing millions and millions of dollars into this. Now, so far, we're making money on it. It's a positive return to us. But we are asking the citizens of this area to put up with a lot. I mean, you drive down the streets, you see these fields of solar panels, which are not really attractive to anyone. We're subjecting them to that every day. There had better be a darn good reason for it. Now, I'm a true believer. I absolutely know there's a real reason for it, and there's a real reason why we should be leading the nation in this. But I want everybody who works in this city to understand it too, because that is one of the primary missions of this city, is to lead the world in solving this problem. Can I be any clearer?
You are absolutely clear, sir.
Then I would like a plan as to how that education process will take place. All right?
Sure.
Thank you. I did it better than the Public Health one, didn't I?
That's so.
Now, the rest of it, I like the plan. I like the moving forward. I like what we're doing, but I also think we have to understand completely why we're doing it. And if we don't have that, if we don't have that, when a few of us leave this council, this whole thing will stop. That is the most essential part of it, is that everyone in this city understands the why of it, not just the how we're doing it. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any comments?
Motion to receive and file.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You gonna vote, or?
Oh, we don't have to vote. Okay, good.
You need to tell them what the vote was.
It's unanimous. Okay, report on activities of the Board of Directors, Antelope Valley Transit Authority.
No.
No, did I miss something?
NB2.
I missed something. Why isn't it on my, oh, there it is. NB2. Patty Garabey.
No speaker cards.
Patty's been waiting all week. Don't wave it. You ready, Patty?
That's okay. If you want me to go home, I can do that, too.
I imagine your heart's beating a little fast right now.
It is, but I'm very excited.
Okay, good.
This is very exciting news. Good evening, Mayor and Council. ZeroNet Energy Homes, and actually, okay, it's working great. ZeroNet Energy Homes are the future of home design. In just three years, the state will require that every new home produces as much energy as it consumes. Through your leadership, the city has made great strides towards becoming a sustainable community. Lancaster is a solar capital of the world, as we all know. In three years, homes across the state will be required to be built to zero-net energy standard. But because of your forward-thinking and your leadership, Lancaster is in the position to lead the charge today. Council has taken ambitious steps to become net zero. In 2013, ordinance 997 was passed, which required that every new home built in the city had a minimum one kilowatt solar system installed. Now, while that was a minimum, what we've seen on average is 2.4 kilowatts installed on every new home. This ordinance was a first of its kind. However, cities throughout the state have taken similar measures. The city of Santa Monica, the city of San Francisco, they've both adopted similar ordinances since Lancaster passed theirs. Feedback from the public has been generally positive. Homeowners have achieved energy savings, and home builders have been able to market their product as a unique product, something that's different from other products on the market, in particular resale homes. In continuing toward our goal of energy independence, the city has an opportunity to expand its current requirement, so that every new home in the city is built to zero-net energy standard. A zero-net energy home is one that is so efficient that when you add a solar component, you can offset all of its energy consumption throughout the year. Oh, sorry. The 2016 Cal Green Energy Standards, or in the 2016 Cal Green Energy Standards, the California Energy Commission created something called a ZNE tier, the ZeroNet Energy Tier. This is a voluntary measure that will allow cities, if they would like to make this mandatory, to require all homes to be built to zero-net energy standard. Lancaster would be the first city in the entire state to have such an ordinance if that were something the council decided to pursue. The ZNE tier was developed in anticipation of the state's mandatory requirement. In 2020, every new home that's built in the city, or in the state, I'm sorry, will have to be built to zero-net energy standard. We are also aware that there's a similar ordinance, a similar requirement coming for commercial buildings in 2030. Through our research, staff, or through our research on zero-net energy homes, staff was able to come across the Carson Crossings neighborhood in Rockland, California. This was one of the first subdivision-scale ZNE projects in the state. This project included 84 high-efficiency homes. These homes have high-performance windows, they have Hurst-quality insulation, they have a 2.4-kilowatt solar system. Cost-optimal designs were included by the developer in each of these homes. Their goal was to create a positive cash flow for the homeowner. In total, the cost for these energy upgrades was $18,000 on average. A couple of things to note about these homes, they actually sold at a rate that was...
They were retrofits?
I'm sorry?
They were retrofits?
No, they were new homes.
Okay.
They were new homes. The total cost for the energy upgrades was $18,000, but a couple of things to note, these homes actually sold twice as fast as the developer originally anticipated, and these homes are currently valued at a rate 12% higher than other homes that were built in that same community at the same time.
What percentage was the 18,000 for the upgrades?
It was, actually, I don't know, but the homes were averaged about $320,000. So 320,000 plus.
Substantially less.
Yes. Staff used a Carson Crossings model to determine the cost for an energy upgrade here in Lancaster. Something that the Carson Crossings model didn't cover, but we thought was important, was to look at the actual energy savings that a resident could expect. So using the energy upgrade costs in the Carson Crossings model, what it would cost here in Lancaster to build a similar project per home would be about $11,400. That's with energy efficiency upgrades and a solar system. Now, the question is, you know, why have the prices gone down so much? The cost of solar has gone down significantly. The Carson Crossings model was built in 2006, and obviously, in 2016, the per-watt cost is now, I think it was $2. That's the average rate. Back then, it was about $6, $6 or $7. So it's gone down significantly, which is why there's such a big difference in the number. And that doesn't actually include the subsidies that a developer would be eligible to apply for. Now, the average energy bill in Lancaster right now is $124 for a resident. So over 30 years, a resident could expect to save just under $45,000 by having a zero-net energy bill every month. Without a bill, they're saving $45,000 over 30 years. So a couple of things to consider. Staff did, you know, evaluate our current ordinance, and we believe the ZNE tier actually complements it really well. We already require our home builders to install a solar system, and that's actually the newest component to the ZNE tier. That's the major change, I guess you could say. We already require that, so that's easy. The ZNE tier will go into effect in 2020. Builders are fully aware of the changes that are happening at a state level. As a matter of fact, as we did our research, we found several different builders that are already building zero-net energy homes. KB Homes is a great example. We found Meritage Homes and several other developers throughout the state. Because there is such a large push from the state, there's also a great deal of incentives available for home builders. Through the investor-owned utilities such as Southern California Edison, you'll find a great deal of energy incentives, and through programs such as GoSolarCalifornia, you'll find a lot of different rebates for solar programs. There's also a federal tax incentive that's available to home builders. Staff recommends that the council direct the planning commission to explore the feasibility of a mandatory ZNE requirement here in Lancaster. Because a ZNE tier is considered a reach code by the California Energy Commission, the city would be required to submit an application. They'd be required to submit an approved ordinance, as well as a cost-effectiveness study. Before I take any questions, I would like to introduce the team, the rest of the team who's worked on this project, Warren Bennett, our chief building official, and Tim Zonker, our chief building, or one of our building inspectors. With that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
So we're ready to roll it out?
Yes, absolutely.
Any questions? What does our planning commission think?
Well, since I just noticed this on the agenda for tonight...
Maybe you should read the agenda.
Well, I read it this morning, and it certainly didn't come as a surprise. However, the detail was not as clear as Ms. Garabey shared with us tonight, and we look forward to considering this opportunity.
So how quick could it be?
Approved?
Yeah.
2017. So we typically, in, actually, October, November is when we adopt our building codes for next year, so at that time, we could adopt this as a code as well.
And that would apply to all approved developments? I mean, you'd...
Any new home built in the city.
Yeah, basically, any permit that's pulled after January 1st, I would understand that.
You expecting any pushback from...
From home builders? There's always pushback on mandatory requirements.
I guess that's true. Okay.
We'll be engaging them. Have fun.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we could give them some craft beer. That wasn't my doing. Thank you.
Motion to approve NB2?
Second that?
I think the requested action was to give direction.
It has a recommendation on NB2.
Okay. So you're moving the recommendation?
Yes.
That's accurate. Thank you. So let's vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. Oh, now we have the marijuana in it. What, you just loaded up today, didn't you?
Last meeting was alcohol, now it's marijuana. I'm a little afraid to know what the next meeting is going to bring. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. We've been asked to give you a brief update on the status of the current, the newest state marijuana laws that became effective January of this year, to discuss kind of the interplay between the state laws and local regulation, and then a brief update on where we're at with some of the potential ballot initiatives to legalize marijuana altogether. And then Lee's going to talk about some of the public safety and health impacts of the commercial cannabis industry. You'll recall that the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act was signed into law last year, became effective January of this year. It established a statewide system for licensing and regulating commercial medical cannabis activity, including cultivation, dispensaries, deliveries, transportation, and other related activities. The act establishes that several state agencies will have responsibility to oversee various aspects of the medical-commercial cannabis industry. It's kind of an alphabet soup. The California Department of Consumer Affairs has created a Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulation that will be responsible for licenses for dispensaries, distributors, and transporters. The Department of Public Health is creating an Office of Medical Cannabis Safety, which is responsible for licensing testing laboratories and for licensing manufacturers of medical cannabis, for example edibles, concentrated cannabis, topical applications, and the like. The Department of Food and Agriculture has a Division of Inspection Services, and they're creating a medical cannabis cultivation program, which will be responsible for licensing cultivators and for establishing a track-and-trace program that will have unique identifiers for each, I guess, batch of marijuana. They're also responsible for implementing regulations to ensure that cultivation is in accordance with all applicable laws concerning land conversion, grading, electricity usage, water usage, agricultural discharges, and the like. The medical cannabis cultivation program is all supposed to work in consultation with the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the State Water Resources Control Board concerning the effects of water diversion and discharge related to outdoor cultivation. And they are supposed to consult with the Department of Pesticide Regulation, which must promulgate regulations concerning the application of pesticides. These state agencies are, they're still in the early stages of developing the regulations for the licensing and other regulatory processes, and each of their websites indicate that they're still anticipating being ready to start issuing licenses January 1 of 2018. That date has not changed since the law first became effective. With respect to local regulations under the existing law, the act expressly provides that a local jurisdiction may adopt ordinances that establish additional requirements and regulations for local licenses regarding commercial medical cannabis activity, but any requirements regarding health and safety, testing, security, and worker protections established by the state must be the minimum standards statewide. This means that until such time as the state regulations are implemented, in effect, a city is responsible for overseeing all the aspects of commercial medical cannabis activity, including the testing requirements to make sure that the chemical profile of each lot of marijuana conforms to state specifications, to verify that the presence of contaminants does not exceed the maximum levels established by the state, and the like. It's important to note, too, that the act contains a provision that already imposes a pretty onerous burden on cities. For state-licensed facilities located in a city, the city shall have full power and authority to enforce the state law and associated regulations if delegated by the state... I don't know what the state's going to do. The city shall further assume complete responsibility for any regulatory function related to those licenses within the city limits that would otherwise be performed by the county or any county officer or employee, including a county health officer, without liability, cost, or expense to the county. So that's on us. With respect to cultivation, there's a little bit of conflict in the existing law between the Business and Professions Code and the Health and Safety Code. The Business and Professions Code provides that persons shall not engage in commercial cannabis activity without both a state and a local license once the state agencies have implemented their regulations. The Health and Safety Code expressly states that a person or entity shall not cultivate medical marijuana without first obtaining both the state and the local license. It further states that a locally issued cultivation permit shall only become active upon licensing by the department. So there's a little bit of a conflict there. Some cities have already adopted ordinances to allow some cultivation. I presume they're relying on the language of the Business and Professions Code rather than what seems to be the stricter language in the Health and Safety Code. There is a little bit of a conflict. I checked the Food and Agriculture website to see what they had to say, and their frequently asked questions suggest that they're looking at it in terms of you have to have both. It says the department is not issuing licenses at this time. The department recommends interested parties continue to work with their city government to obtain the local licenses and permits required to apply for a state cultivation license. So it's not clear, really, at this point, what the city is authorized to do in terms of allowing cultivation until such time as the state regulations have been implemented. Brief update on initiatives to legalize non-medical marijuana. There is one initiative called the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. It is in the process of verifying the number of signatures to qualify for the ballot. It's about 23,000 verified signatures short at this point. It seems, however, very likely that it's probably going to make that. The deadline is June 30th, just a couple of days away, but there are still three or four counties that have tens of thousands of signatures that they need to verify via random sampling. Seems quite likely that the 23,000 will be something that will be met. Assuming that the initiative qualifies for the November ballot, and if it passes, it goes into effect the day after Election Day. However, that new initiative expressly provides that the various state agencies will begin issuing licenses January 1, 2018. And those state agencies are the same ones that are handling the medical cannabis activity regulations. It's sort of a parallel track at this point. That's all I have. We're going to let Lee do his thing, and then we'll be available for questions.
This was all a scam so lawyers could open up medical marijuana laws. This was all a scam so lawyers could open up medical marijuana law firms, huh?
I think the thing, that issue that comes from that is, you can already see that the, the state really is kind of not decided exactly how this is going to be managed, and there's some conflict within the departments in the state on whose responsibility it's going to be from that seed to sale point. So there's 17 different gaps of, of regulation that will take place from seed to sale, and it looks at this point that those would fall on the local level right now, even after the state's jurisdiction. It looks potentially that it could fall down to the local level.
Are we, are we limited in any way as to what we charge them for permit fees, things like that?
I don't seem to see any limits at this point.
So, do we have anybody working on how we turn this into a plus instead of a negative?
Not yet, but we can.
But we're going to be like Gumby and Poki in the former slide, and we're going to be flexible.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a good idea.
How's that? Which one? I don't care, I'll take either one. But there's some issues as it really relates to law enforcement, and because it's such an evolving, a quickly evolving array of laws, regulations, and ordinance that outpace enforcement tools. So not really knowing what direction this is going, how it's going to be managed, and then currently, in light of some of the legislation in the state, that's a development issue on, because really, right now, possession of less than one ounce of marijuana is merely an infraction, and, and really, until it becomes significant amount of citations, it's not really addressed with a court. But, some of the biggest issues are, there's no reliable way, as compared to blood alcohol levels, to determine whether or not someone's driving under the influence of, of cannabinoids or for marijuana. And the only real way to test for a level of intoxication with marijuana is through a blood test. But currently, our law gives you three options as it relates to impairment, okay, for driving. So there's an issue there legislatively that needs to be changed in the law that gives law enforcement the opportunity, when they believe someone's under the influence, driving under the influence of marijuana, to be able to require a mandatory blood test. Also, the issue is, is the absorption rate is different, so it's hard to determine, and even scientifically, on the study, I have a large amount of paperwork there and things Jocelyn and I have been going to, and through every study, there's no scientific way to determine what a toxicity or impairment level is. So with alcohol, we all know that's 0.08%. With marijuana, there's no determinate level for that right now, so it varies in state to state.
There's a lot of countries that, that you don't drive with any alcohol.
Correct.
It would seem that somebody should be considering that in regards to this.
Right.
Right?
I agree with that. The difference is, too, the challenge is with marijuana is, depends on how it's ingested. So if, you know, it's smoked, it has a quicker cause and effect and peak time that takes effect within minutes and can have a lasting diminishing effect for up to four hours. Whereas with edibles and things, depending on the concentration of THC, I mean, there's some information here from the medical field that some of the edibles are 95% purity rate as far as the levels of THC compared to regular smoking of marijuana joints. So that's significant. And that's also led to poisoning issues in both the states of, like Washington and Colorado, jumping up of well over 150% in each state since the legalization of marijuana and for edibles. And there's all kinds of issues with edibles that are being discussed, just because of the packaging, like gummy bears and certain sodas and things like that, with really no regulation on how much THC and what levels are involved in. And that's what Jocelyn was talking about earlier with being able to test the marijuana and make a determination if it's within the state standard for the amount of THC, the active ingredient that creates the euphoric high that's associated. The other issue comes into fact where with, working with law enforcement is being, who can file those cases and make that determinative cause of ingestion and impairment out in the field? So typically now, with blood alcohol levels, we have pretty much almost every deputy sheriff that's out there has been trained in field FSTs and making a determination for impairment, but for narcotic-related type arrests, for driving under the influence of drugs, you have to be a qualified expert in drug recognition. And so that's a significant impact on resources of being retraining all the officers that work and patrol in our field as it relates to that impaired driving. There's also a national model, that specification that needs to be developed for an oral fluid type test, so something that's more standardized that would be accepted in the courts, okay, and stipulated to, rather than having to come at every officer on each case to discuss that level of impairment without a qualified test to confirm what they determine. Also, the implied consent laws, like we said earlier, when you get your driver's license, you, you automatically have implied consent that you'll subject yourself, if you determine that you are impaired driver, to certain tests for a level of impairment, and to determine and, and to confirm the officer's observations in the field. That currently does not exist because the only method for determining a level of THC is a blood test.
Are we preempted in regards to requiring a blood test if there's an injury accident?
That's... I would say yes. That's something I would have to look into. I, I, I don't know at this time.
I think it would be good. I think that, you know, the reality of that is, especially in light of what we're dealing with on this issue, and it just, again, the state is way beyond the scope of this is thing maybe coming forward as early as this year and be implemented immediately with no, no determinate factor statewide. So I understand, maybe under the mindset that there's some type of emergent situation we have as it relates to that, if we see some numbers. Now, I will tell you that in the states of, like in Seattle, city of Seattle, they saw a significant increase in driving while under the influence of drug fatalities, significant, like 28% increase immediately. On the same thing for Colorado. Colorado, for the Denver area, was up. Property crime in both those cities went up significantly because people still have to buy it. Whether it's legalized or not, they still have to purchase it. Auto theft in both cities went up almost 50%. So there's some significant issues. The thing with the, the edibles, I think it's really concerning was, is just, that one is scary, as far as numbers they had with poisonings, pesticides, detections. Colorado had over 1,000 places that they had to take certain items off the shelf because it, because of issues that came up with it, within the testing of it as related to pesticides and pesticides that are not approved to be used with growing marijuana. Then I think the other thing is, is that there's a significant lobby group out there that's trying to prohibit the states from regulating those issues as it relates to packaging and enticement. It almost becomes a rapid reminder of what Big Tobacco did at one point, okay, and how they put packaging out there or how the commercials were, things, to create some incentive for people to buy their product. So with those things, I think the biggest thing for us on a, from a law enforcement standpoint is implementation, regulation, what the law is going to fall out to be, what's the impact on the courts? There's all kinds of things that are out there as it relates to this. And there's discussion back and forth on whether the, like the tax revenue, for example, like the tax revenue on alcohol and what the impact alcohol has financially to, to communities is clearly, the revenue from the tax, sales tax, does not even come close to covering what the costs are to deal with alcohol-related issues. The same thing for tobacco. So there's some comparables out there for that argument. And that's, that's all I have.
Well, there has to be some questions.
I have one. I do have one. There's still, with this whole thing with the legalization, still the big, the elephant in the room, and that's that it's still federally illegal, which means financially, these, if we, if, if, if there was to be stores opening, they can't get bank accounts, which means they have to store their finances other places.
Cash.
Which makes themselves huge targets.
Yes, as we've talked about before, because it's illegal at the federal level, banks run the risk of losing their federal charter if they knowingly allow somebody in the commercial medical, commercial marijuana activity business to have bank accounts. So, some of them may, but if they're, if they're discovered, I'm pretty sure they're cut off right away. It is still primarily a cash business. We've talked about it both at Criminal Justice Commission and Planning Commission and here in the past, that in Denver, for example, a lot of the larger dispensaries have hired Iraq and Afghanistan veterans to drive around in armed Humvees to take the cash from place to place so they can pay their bills. So it's a little scary.
And I think on that, too, as far as like the US Postal Service, I mean, the number of exports out of, through the postal service to deliver in that marijuana that's legally grown in Colorado, but that's ending up going to other states, as well as the interdiction model for law enforcement in those other states as they border those, border Colorado, that's gone up 521%. So we're, individuals were transporting illegal amounts of marijuana out of the state.
You know, I don't, I don't think there's any issue that we would prefer this not be the case, that it not be allowed anywhere. We would prefer that. But what we're very clear on is that's not the case. It is going to be allowed. It, it already is being allowed, and a lot of cities are recognizing that and recognizing that it's a huge opportunity for revenue. Now, there's two issues here. One is the retail, and we know how to deal with retail. We did it with the porno shops. You put them in industrial, you make it so that, you know, it's just not real profitable. That's why we don't have porno shops in Lancaster. We know how to do that. And that, that resolves a lot of the issues you're talking about, and that's the actual consumption of it. But the other thing we have to decide is, do we want to give this market to other cities? That it's going to be a huge, huge revenue generation vehicle for those cities? Now, we can say, no, we, we don't want to do that, that, you know, we're, we're above it in some way, and give up millions of dollars. But I don't know that that's the best thing we should be doing from a wholesaler point of view, meaning a grower point of view. There, there's, there's cities that intend to make a huge amount of revenue from this. For the, the things we want to do with this city, we need a huge amount of revenue. The, the, what we could do with that for law enforcement is a factor that we should be considering. But it is going to take being willing to stand up to the tide. I mean, I mean, it, it would be very easy for me to say, not in my city, and it's coming anyway. It's already here. I mean, for heaven's sakes, there's grow houses in this city already. We're, we're delusional if we think that it's, it's not already happening. It seems just, makes a lot more sense to me to control it, to regulate it, and get the money from it. Or we can let Cal City do it, or we could let Atlanta do it. But this is the mall all over again. You, you let this type of revenue generation go to another city, it's going to be too late. And it, it seems like the people of the state of California want this to be like growing wheat. And I don't think there's anybody in this room that doesn't think that's going to happen. We, we can, we can put on this cloak of sanctimonious outrage, and it will change nothing. Or we can deal with the world the way it is and try to create a benefit and create a safe environment for our citizens. Is somebody...
She brings a dog in, and she...
Really? All right.
The only, the only comment I would say on that, Eric, is trying to understand before we do anything is what clearly is going to be the responsibility, the regulation why by the state. That's the, that's the biggest, I think, issue as it relates to this, and what that impact could be, and what that requirement is. And in the discussions that Jocelyn and I have had, and the things we attended with the CCA, clearly, they don't know what they're dealing with either, just to be perfectly honest with you. They're talking about cultivation allotments up to five acres. Now, five acres, that's a lot of weed, okay? All right, I'm just going to put it out there. I don't think people have any concept of how many plots could be grown in just a house. Okay, so I'm saying the individuals that are involved in determining and outlining this regulation have no clue of what's involved here, other than what they primarily deal with and other issues, like it's a farm in Central Valley. It's a completely different mind, mindset to this. So that's the concerns. That would be the only concern that I would share, because of course, I'm, am I Gumby or Poki?
You're Poki.
Okay, I'm going to be flexible on whatever this council decides to do and what they believe that should be done.
Well, it seems to me like maybe we should have alternate plans. One is, one plan would be suppression. What is the, the way we can legally suppress it to the, the best of our ability? And then the other one is, what is the best way we can regulate it and, and create a benefit for the city in a safe environment? If, if they're, if this type of business is going to increase the cost of law enforcement, it seems to me they should pay for the increase in the cost of law enforcement. The, but what I, what I, I don't want us to do is to put blinders on and be blind to what's happening. Anybody disagree with that?
I do.
What do you disagree with?
Well, I don't understand how we're going to make millions of dollars on it, number one, because...
I didn't, wait a minute, I didn't say that. I said that there's a possibility that we could make that, and there are other cities that are planning to do precisely that.
Okay, but I don't understand how anyone can make millions of dollars on it, because anytime you tax, most of it goes to the state, the other portion goes to the county, and we get very little of it, so...
You do it with permit fees.
We can do it with permit fees, but we have to tie those permit fees to the actual cost.
True.
We can't just say we're going to make millions of dollars. We have to tie it to the cost. We have to prove that the law enforcement are, are doing it, so the cost of this, so effectively, we're not going to make any money, millions, based upon what the regulations are right now.
Okay, hold on a second. What is our law enforcement budget?
About, total public safety is about 28, 29. Sheriff is about 26.
So, $26 million, $28 million, in that range. If it's going to increase that budget by 10%, isn't that millions of dollars? And why wouldn't it increase that budget by 10% if the sheriff's department tells us it is? So let's, let's be clear, it is millions of dollars, I just don't know how many millions of dollars. And I'm also clear that there are cities around us that are planning to do this.
You asked me about the cost. You asked me about the, the cost, and we have to directly relate any applications that we have to permits to the actual cost.
And that's what I just told you how we would do it.
Okay, but we, that's, that's why I'm saying we need to understand how we do that, and if it's going to cost us an extra 10%, so it's going to cost us an extra $2.5 million, I don't see how we're going to make, we can charge them an extra $2.5 million, but what you're saying is, desks go up, all law enforcement obligations go up, and that's the, that's not what we need at this time. I'm, I'm for what you're saying, if it passes in November, we need to take a different look at it, and if there's no, but as far as taking it to the direction that we need to go this direction because we'll make money on it, I don't think that's...
What I, what I said was, is I want two plans. One is suppression, one is figuring out a way to mitigate the damage and increase the profitability for the city.
So...
If I asked, was, is anybody opposed to those two, developing those two plans?
So, Mayor, if I could speak, so, I'm a firm believer that you can either let things get out of hand and have a mess, or we could go into the game with two plans, because we don't know what the outcome is going to be, but I would like, I would be for two plans, because I don't want to wait till the vote, and then we haven't done near the work that we should have, and then things really get away from us. So I would, it is my preference, speaking for Mr. Mann, that we ultimately, whether we give direction to staff tonight or not, looks like to me we better get on the horse and start riding pretty fast to come up with at least two or three options, so that when we get to the end of the year, we don't have staff and we don't have problems and things getting completely astray from us, irregardless of which direction we go. I think poor planning, no planning, is not the way to do things, my opinion.
I agree.
My, my, my concerns, too, are everything that you listed regarding public safety, but also after hearing councilors' report, it also appears as though the rest of the world is moving in this direction anyhow. is moving in this direction anyhow. My concern is that we do nothing, and then the state tells us what we have to do. I would like for us to get ahead of that as well. So I believe the two plans would be the logical way to go.
Are, are we all in agreement that we don't want retail establishments near any schools, commercial areas, that we want to, that we're not going to promote those in any way? Anybody disagree with that? I want to get the feeling for the, Frank? We're good with that?
Yeah, I don't think we should hit, well, I still like the idea of having two plans. And obviously, if the plan is to move forward with some kind of control, obviously, we would never want it to supersede or equal to more than what we've done with our alcohol ordinances. So, I mean, that would be completely crazy.
I don't care if we have five plans, but our number one plan should be not for this. Okay? Our number one plan should be against the legalization for anybody to use. Our number one plan should be a plan in which lessens the crime, not increases it. If it happens in the rest of the state of California does it, I don't mind having a fallback plan. I don't care if we have five, six, 10 plans.
Right.
But our number one plan should be for the city of Lancaster to oppose legalization of marijuana.
Yeah. And I would concur with you, Vice Mayor. I just want to have some options, because who wants something forced down your throat? And who knows what those crazy people will do in Sacramento?
Personally, I'm a libertarian. You know, I think we've got far too many laws. I think people are adults. If people want to kill themselves, they can kill themselves. So we're clear. I mean, I wouldn't have any of those laws. But that's me. What can I say?
That's not true.
It is true.
That's not true.
I think that if we...
We have a, we have a law that where people can be buried because you wanted it. So you're not a libertarian in that sense.
We have a what now?
We have a law that we can't bury terrorists in the city of Lancaster.
Well, I mean, there's limits to what I'm going to be as a libertarian. I mean, but I, but I was such a libertarian, I didn't pass, I didn't ask you to pass the ordinance that they have to go to the dump. I mean, I left some discretion here, didn't I?
Yes.
So, did we get concurrence? I was, I was just, just...
Just so we're clear, if we had spent one-tenth the money on drug treatment that we spent on drug enforcement, we wouldn't have a drug problem. And I think that the evidence is, is pretty robust, uh, that that is the, the case. And so I, I don't see why we want to go down that path of something, doing something we know isn't going to work, you know? Perhaps we should do it so whatever funding we get goes into drug education programs. Uh, the, but anyway, you got the direction that we want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
I'll make that motion that we receive and file only.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Oh, did you want to speak on this?
Yeah.
Come on down.
It's too late now.
Well...
Figured it all out.
Well, first of all, I don't understand any of what you're saying, because we might as well, we need to regulate it and get on with it, because they're already here. You have people delivering marijuana through the city. I said that last time. And you're not reaping any of the benefits.
What do they charge when they deliver it?
I mean, I don't understand. So, I mean, is, nothing's going to change in the community. It's going to stay the same. There, people go home and smoke their weed, and that's it. Use it for, you know, medication or recreational, either way. They're doing it every day here, up the street, down the street, across the street. It's going on, so why not reap the benefits of all of it? Um, we're making too much of a big deal of this, and since you know, I've been doing this for eight years, and I am not near a school, church, or playground, and I take care of many people, not so much on the recreational side, more on the medical side, but I haven't had any problems. And I've been trying to pay my taxes, and you took the money. So, I mean, now I want my license. I need my license.
Are you growing or selling?
So I can go to the state.
Growing or selling?
Selling.
I mean wholesale or retail?
Retail.
You see the difference though, right?
I mean, I even took all my information to Captain Anderson seven years ago. Showed him all my labeling, everything. He's not there now, but...
I, I, I totally get that, that this is a, this is a ridiculous discussion, because it is going on.
It is. And people know, you know, I mean, eating the edibles and this and that, when, you know, we give education regarding all that. So I would like to know, and I'm just going to throw this out there, if you're going to regulate it, and you want to know more about it, and about the products and the packaging, and what's there, I'd be more than happy to let you come over to where I am. I'm serious.
No, I ain't going.
I am serious. I am serious.
Nobody's getting that picture.
I won't be open. I'll just let you be there. I mean, how are you going to, how are you going to regulate something if you don't have...
That's a good one.
You know, you could go in and see it, and learn it, and feel it, and know it.
Yeah, it, it's just a politically hot issue that everybody is nervous about, you know? I mean, and it...
Well, I would lock the door. I won't let any patients in.
You know, I, I worry, uh, eight years ago, there was somebody that would come and talk like you do.
Uh, yes.
And then they took her kids away.
Oh, really? Oh, her. But, well, that was a different story.
You know, I just, I just think you should be a little more circumspect until the law does get resolved. I mean, I, I worry about it. Okay?
I guess. Okay.
I mean, I was, I was just shocked when that happened, but Children's Services went in and took her kids away, because she was saying the same things you're saying.
I don't have any children for them to take away.
Okay.
So that's fine.
Okay.
But I, I have never, ever ran or never, ever tried to hide anything from anybody. You know, I've always been out there, out front.
I just, I just don't want people to get the idea that the rest of the world has the view that, I mean, this council has a pretty open view of willing to consider anything before they make a decision. And, and that is not necessarily the view of the world.
Not necessarily, I'm sorry?
Not necessarily the view of the world.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But I, I think that it would be informative if you went in and saw how they operate and get more information regarding what goes on inside.
Hey, for me, it's not, I'm not allowed to be around people, places, or things, okay?
Got it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's go back and vote again.
Do we have to do that?
I think we should.
It was just to receive and file. It's still received and filed. You're okay.
Okay. Okay. Uh, where are we? CA 1. Oh, how are we doing on the city parcel tax?
We're doing good. We're going to have a special meeting on July 6th. Uh, we are still working the numbers. The numbers are looking very good. We're, we took into consideration seniors. It looks like we'll be able to give seniors a 50% reduction of some of the stuff that we're talking about. Uh, the numbers were still truing up, so everything looks good. Jason, you want to add anything to?
No, just a couple dates, so the, the public can compare, and you can prepare, is that July 6th is a special meeting. July 12th, the ordinance will be approved, setting the election for October 11th is the anticipated election date, if the council so chooses.
Anybody do any polling?
No poll, yeah.
We're going to?
No.
Okay. Okay. So we're on track, right? Thank you. Okay. Antelope Valley Transit.
Um, we did, um, we approved today for UL testing on our electrification of the buses. So, uh, we're doing that on all our different sites to make sure that they're all safe. Um, that's pretty much it. We're meeting with, uh, the CEC on the 28th of, uh, July in regards to different grants. We've put in several different grants for, um, solar components. So what we're trying to do is have a solar field that will, uh, charge the electric buses, so we don't take anything from the grid at all. So it's, we're running the buses on zero.
That's really cool.
So we'll have, uh, solar charging or in the battery storage. We have battery storage.
Really? Net zero transportation?
Absolutely.
That's really cool.
Absolutely. So, that's exciting. Um, everyone's getting on board with it. We're having all the different agencies, um, around the state come and visit and actually see what we're doing and how we're doing it, because everyone said it couldn't be done, and we're actually doing it. So it, it is exciting. Um, we're getting different grants from different, uh, people. And today, we came up with a different grant that, uh, hopefully will allow the students of AV College to ride for free. So what we're going to do is have the, um, we put in a grant last year from the AVA QMD. It's a $50,000 grant. It can be matched by the college for $50,000. AVTA is going to match that, and we're actually going to get Metro to match that portion. So we'll have $200,000 of matching funds to allow all the students to ride for free, um, from the college. So they have a new facility in Palmdale that will be opening after the first of the year. So what we're trying to do is streamline that, so all the students, and trying to make sure that the students know how to ride the buses and to do that. So, it's exciting.
And with that, we are looking, working with staff also to reduce the amount of ride time for students to have a direct line from Palmdale, Lancaster to the college, to get the time from approximately two hours and two and a half hours down to 45 minutes to an hour.
That's huge.
So we're actually, uh, the colleges has money which they can use to actually buy a bus. So we're going to use that. We have the buses, so we're going to use that. So rather than have a, a line that they will run, we'll run the line, but we can run it more effectively and more efficiently. And, uh, they're going to, we're working different partnerships with different people to get money from everywhere to make it work. So, um, it looks good. Good partnership with, uh, Antelope Valley College.
Good. Thank you. Ken, sanitation.
Uh, we adopted the 216-17 budget, um, so we can publicly announce that the sewer rates will not change. So they'll remain at $39.17, unlike our neighbors to the south. That's unfortunate for them. Uh, we had a, we've got a projected reduction in expenses of about 8% over the previous year. And, uh, our goal is to bank about another $2 million in the rate stabilization fund. And if we have another good year, uh, as we did in 2015, I will try to attempt to, uh, see if we can't get that rate down even lower. You know, one of the things I came to mind is the disparity between the rate here and in Palmdale. It's going to be cheaper to own a home in Lancaster, operating costs, and it's going to be cheaper to operate a business down here. That's kind of neat, just in the differences in the rates. And then, uh, lastly, one of the directions that we'd given staff was to completely do a new study about, uh, water reclamation, water use, um, because we think that going forward, that the equations that we're currently using to establish rates are maybe out of touch, and that maybe we need to look at how water's being used, um, to come up with maybe a new, whole new rate structure. So, we asked for all the sanitation districts to put money in to be able to do that study. And so, that's one of the things on the list. They said it might take a, close to a year to be able to do that, maybe 18 months, to be able to get some new information from which we can be able to. We've had several people come before us and talk about the disparity in some of the rates. Um, and we did do some housekeeping this last year. We actually had a reduction of about 600 sewer units, and that was from housekeeping the poor documentation historically, where people were being overcharged for sewer fees. So that's, not that we had a reduction of sewer connections, we were just, we did some house, housekeeping in sanitation district 14. So, anyway, that's kind of a, in a nutshell, conclusion for the year, and then looking forward to see if we can't get better at what we do.
I, I did have an opportunity to sit on the sanitation district, um, a couple weeks ago. Mr. Mann was absent, but I have to tell you, his work there has really worked for the citizens of Lancaster, not only the businesses, but the, uh, the seniors and everybody. Um, we have, it's not remaining the same. You're actually reduced the rates. So he had the rates reduced.
By, by $20.
Yeah.
Sewer.
So it's, it's...
No. Well, yeah, annually, if you amortize it. And like I said, if I would have had my way, uh, and that was another discussion point about why we needed to call for a new rate study, is, um, looking for opportunities to figure out how we can get, if you stop figuring out utilities, although I guess you could consider sewage use a utility, is the gas company, electricity, just about all the costs to maintain a home, there's usually a senior discount. And for whatever reason, that's not done with sanitation fees. And so that kind of caused the, the direction to say, okay, maybe we need to throw away the old way of doing things, and maybe we need to take a look at, you know, a better way moving forward. And I think, again, it's back to that planning. You can either just let it run, and, and not necessarily input your head in the sand, or you can figure out a better way to do things. And I, I just think there's a need for that, especially when I find out that they're using archaic information from the 80s. That's, that's stupidity. I mean, nobody's, what business runs with information from the 80s? I mean, that's absurd. They wouldn't even sell phones in the 80s, let alone computer use. Crazy. Anyway, that's it. Thank, thank you, Marvin, for that compliment. I'll take it.
Can we get the Cal water, uh, tested and, and independently?
The Cal, the quality of the water?
Yeah, and, but I want the federal, uh, safe drinking water, uh, criteria for the testing, but I want it done independently. Could we do that?
Yeah, it's, the cost would be minor. We just have to let, we know people would let us test the water there.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing too. Uh, all the contracts that they had had historically, they were usually long-term. No more. I, it, it, two years is, is as far as we're right in them, because there's just too much change. So the energy agreements, uh...
Could you ever work out the...
Water rates.
Building?
I'm sorry?
Ever work out the lease of the building?
The leasing the buildings?
No, never did get a, a straight answer on, you know, they, they have a tendency to dodge a lot of things. So I was on the phone with them today about some other matters too, but I won't speak about that until we get to the other side.
Want me to sit in on a meeting?
Hey, that would be fun. You know who the other member is?
I do. Oh, okay. Everybody good?
Planning?
Well, I was fudging reading my email from the Los Angeles Times, and the initiative you folks were talking about earlier on the legalization of recreational pot did qualify for the ballot, according to the Los Angeles Times. So, uh, on our next, uh, planning commission agenda, we'll be, uh, taking up land use as, as it relates to dispensaries and growers.
Is there a move to actually put it in?
Is there a move to actually put it in the, the fields?
What was the question?
I mean, right now, it's all been grown in, in warehouses. Uh, is there?
We, we have, yeah, we have been doing a lot of research, both on fees and stuff, and there are pluses and minuses for grow houses and in fields. Um, dealing with water use is a tremendous amount of electricity use when you grow it indoors as an indoor grow.
Okay.
And there's actually a climate change impact for marijuana, more so growing indoors and outdoors.
Community choice.
We've already looked at the opportunities for money in that, but, I mean, in, in all seriousness, the, the staff will be prepared, um, for whatever happens, we'll be prepared.
Thank you.
Now, we could let them use sewer water and I could triple or quadruple the, the contract rates.
Telling you, there's just potential here. Mr. Carter?
Well, from the last two meetings, it's obvious that the Criminal Justice Commission will be quite busy. Um, we'll be, uh, working with the beverage community, beverage vendors communities with their, um, suggestions for the revamping of the, uh, the, uh, single serve ordinance. And now that, uh, um, the marijuana ordinance is qualified for the ballot, we'll, we'll definitely be interested in that also.
And you want to take a look at Marvin's community garden?
This is Rex's backyard.
So, I attended the, uh, the Eric Garcetti's mayor's conference that he does every periodically. And one of the things the city of LA is doing is working with the college district to provide free community college. And they're doing it with federal grants and state grants, and they extended the invitation for all the other cities with community colleges to work with them as to how they're doing it. And the motivation behind it is, is what's happening with student, student debt and how it's, it's shifting. I mean, it, it, it's not just that these people end up owing $300,000, $400,000 when they get out of college. That means they will never own a home. It changes the whole economic climate of the country. I mean, it's becoming a real serious threat. And, you know, with the idea that we deal with these things locally, that's something we should be looking at. So, I would like a staff member, I would like you to appoint somebody to get together with the city of LA, find out what they did, and then work with the college and see if that's something we should be looking at here.
Absolutely. That's a good idea.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Uh, okay. That's my announcement. City clerk?
City manager.
Oh, that's right. City manager. Any announcements?
A couple. You so like our videos, we're going back again.
Wait, and I still, did we do that before or after?
Your, your call, whichever you'd like.
Okay, Marvin.
Those are city clerk ones.
That's why we went to city clerk before the city manager.
No, we do the city manager first.
Okay.
All right. The vice mayor wants you to go first. We have a special bond. Thank you, Marvin. Medical marijuana, um, excuse me, medical Main Street.
Now, that's funny. I really, I really don't want a component of that in medical Main Street.
That was, that was a flashback moment for, um, medical Main Street is moving forward very well. Want to thank Raj Molly for leading it up. Our consultants are working, they're working with stakeholders. Uh, we're very excited for the next few months as we engage the community in both the Climate Action Plan and the Zero Net Energy Ordinance. And I think one of the things is that's a, that's a sign of an engaged community where we can throw these things out there, truly get input, and there will be no shortage of input on all of these, and come up with something that's going to truly help the city in all three of those cases. We sometimes forget, though, that there's other things that are born of stakeholder and community engagement. One of them, uh, we take the Fourth of July celebration for granted, but if you would have told me personally, I just put on me five years ago, that we'd be cooperating with the auto dealers, the city, and the fairgrounds in anything, I would have said that's not going to happen. And yet, if the event that's put on between the professional bull riding and Fourth of July is spectacular, so the first event we're going to see is a promo for the Fourth of
Celebrate the Fourth of July with the entire family at the Fireworks Extravaganza presented by Lancaster Auto Mall, the city of Lancaster, and the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds. Gates open at 4:00 PM with entertainment and food vendors. At 7:00, the PBR takes center stage in the Grandstand Arena and cap off the evening with the fireworks show at 9:30. So, come celebrate our nation's Independence Day at the Fireworks Extravaganza presented by Lancaster Auto Mall, the city of Lancaster, and the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds.
So, it's always a really good time, and, um, the bull riding in particular is a lot of fun. I think it sold out again, right, Marvin?
Yes.
Yeah. Number two, one of the events that we didn't get to in the interest of time last time to show was, uh, LPAC's Annual City Slickers fundraiser. And that raised $100,000, but I don't think a lot of people know what that goes for. That goes to have kids go to LPAC and for most of them, see their first presentation in a, in a theater. And there's, there's, there's thousands of kids that literally get to go to LPAC. One thing we're going to do different this year, and we should have struck on a long time ago, our donors, we don't invite when the kids are there. So, this year, we're going to send them all personal invitations so they can come and see these kids and see their faces when they go to LPAC for the first time. So, this is a short video on that fundraiser, City Slickers, which happened about three weeks ago.
We're here tonight at the Lancaster Performing Arts Center where the sixth annual gala and grand auction are taking place hosted by the LPAC Foundation. This year's theme, City Slickers. Hi, Stephen, what are we doing here today?
We're raising money for the LPAC Foundation. In years past, we've gotten over, you know, 100, 130,000. We'd really like to get about that much tonight. Um, it's absolutely possible. We have the greatest community, um, support behind us, what we do here at the foundation. So, we're hoping for that. So, every year, we get about 15,000 kids that we bring to the LPAC. If it wasn't for the money that we raised at the event tonight, that wouldn't happen. So, just that in and of itself is spectacular. But I could tell you now, because we're going to announce it to the world here very shortly, the foundation has started a scholarship, and it's the largest performing arts scholarship in the Antelope Valley. It's $5,000. From high school, it's a college scholarship, and we're going to give our recipient tonight the first check. So, it's going to be a pretty special night tonight. It's something new. It's something that's, uh, we can just affect change in, in our youth here, and it's just absolutely spectacular.
We are celebrating the sixth annual Lancaster Performing Arts Center Foundation Grand Gala. So, we are really excited tonight. We're going to have a great auction, all to benefit our Arts for Youth program here at the Performing Arts Center in Lancaster.
Can you give us a little insight into what our theme is this year?
This year is the second annual City Slickers theme. So, everybody is cowboyed up and having a good time. We've got some great country music on the stage, some great, uh, trips and gifts to auction off later this evening, and it's just a really great atmosphere.
The money for the Arts for Youth program, it helps our schools to bring in children to see our Arts for Youth programming. So, we are able to scholarship because the schools don't have as much money as it takes to bring them here. The money also goes to raise money for transportation for the same students.
The foundation has created a $5,000 scholarship. We had auditions here, uh, not too long ago for six participants, the finalists, and the winner is announced tonight. One of the things that we really appreciate is theme parties where we can actually feel a little casual, and we really want people to have a really good time, have a casual experience, and just, we're going to come out for the kids and really, you know, raise those paddles and raise money for our foundation.
Yes, sir. He got power. What do you got, 12, 50 there? 9:00, 12:00.
And it was, it was a really good time. And finally, breaking news, one of the seven of you up there has been named to their high school Hall of Fame. And before you guess and embarrass the person by picking him last, it's Marvin Christ to the Palmdale Hall of Fame. Give him a hand.
I'm not saying a word.
Forgot when, it's October something or other.
October 7th or 8th.
Are we buying a table or?
Oh, we're all going to be there to heckle. This is going to, especially the people that he beat up during high school, they're coming back to.
So, just how many people did you beat up in high school?
None.
That's right, sir.
Did you go to Palmdale?
No, he was, he, he went.
Okay. Moving on. City clerk.
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendaized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Fred, come on down.
Maybe I should put it up.
Yeah. You're fine. You're fine. Right there, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Mayor Payerson, Vice Mayor Chris, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And consul and everybody here, ladies, ladies and gentlemen. I had a whole bunch of notes as I was sitting there, uh, but I really can't speak on them on this part. So, but I did want to ask, you said the seniors are going to get half off to be able to ride the buses? What happened to 100% off?
No, we, we will pay for the half. AVA QMD will pay for the other half.
Oh, so then we're still going to, our seniors are still riding free?
That's correct. Ours in Lancaster.
In Lancaster, right. Okay, I just, I, I was just clarifying that.
Because we love our seniors.
We better, or I'll come after you with my stick. Oh, I went to, uh, last, I guess it was last Monday, uh, I went on a, there's a group of us that get together once a month, and we take a trip on the MetroLink to downtown, and we take one of the buses or wherever, and like I said before, we went to Santa Monica, and I saw a bus, BYD bus, working, and I felt kind of good about it. I told everybody I came from Lancaster, so, um, I did have a couple of things, though, like the MetroLink, since lately I've been going. I have a little bit of concern, that same day, in fact, because this, the, the property is in really disarray, disarray. It's very dirty. And then I happened to see.
You mean the station?
The station. And I happened to see two people, two guys that work for the Lancaster, um, oh, Parks and Recreation, whoever takes care of it, maintenance. And I asked them, I says, who takes care of, who cleans this place up? And they said, well, we do. And they looked at me, and then they said, but we're on break right now. So, I watched them. Anyway, I watched them. You know what they did? They have those things that do pick up trash, picked up two or three pieces of paper, the big things, and that's all they did, and they did their work in less than five minutes. And they left a lot of trash out. They left the, the grounds all, you know how they're spotted with stuff people spill. It was still left a mess. And, and also on the other side of the fence was Metro's department to take care of the railings. I even took pictures. There's a lot of trash on the rails themselves, but that's on the, the rail, uh, that's Metro takes care of that, right? So, I was going to call them, but I haven't had a chance. But it's really a mess.
Are we auditing them on that deal we have with them?
Um, I'll, I'll have to go back and look. I know, I know that we sent people over there, plus we have people. Are you talking about the, not, not the deal we have with?
It sounds like it, it might be falling back into the way things were.
Yeah, we, we will send someone out there tomorrow.
To clean it up, because it, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a bad, sore eye for Lancaster, you know? I, I see the rest of them, and they're doing pretty good, but then I look at our own, and thank you very much for this, and I got a whole bunch, but time is of the essence. Thank you very much. God bless you all.
Wally, Melendez. What a way to end a meeting.
Wally, he's going to yell at me.
What's so funny?
I said you're going to yell at me.
City council, um, staff, people of Lancaster. America is in a lot of trouble.
Wally, can you step up so we can hear you?
Our America is in a lot of trouble. Mayor, I, I really like you, but we all should be more circumspective about the situation in America. Marijuana legalization is going to open up a Pandora's Box, revenue or no revenue. I've said this before. And, thank God that we have that federal law that, that, uh, protects us, uh, uh, somehow. We don't want America to go down the drain. Just look, just look at other countries. Just look at other countries around the world, third world countries. That's why they're third world, because every, that's all they do all day. Everybody smokes pot. That's why they're third world. So, we don't want to be a third world country. And, uh, we, we, we have to remember that, uh, that, 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 that we're a special country, and God, the God in the Bible made this country. Remember, remember. Remember the pilgrims, remember the pilgrims. The God in the Bible made this country. God didn't say, everybody get high or think of the revenue. What happened to principle? So, anyway, getting back to my subject, Robocop. The city needs to, uh, invest in a Robocop, self-transportable, and so it can move from corner to corner so that this pothead's driving cars don't strike people back and forth, and the Robocop can take with their little camera, take their little license plate.
Women, did you think?
And guess what?
Wally, Wally, did you think?
In the middle, they'll get a little surprise.
Wally, Wally, did you think Coop was a real person?
Who?
Coop, Coop's not a real person.
Who?
He, he's, he's, you know, a synthetic, you know? Seriously, I mean, he looks, he looks like a real cop, but no, he, he's autonomous, really.
Exactly.
Thank you. All right. I mean, it's amazing what they've done with robotics these days. I think we're coming to an end. Do we have a, uh, good? Any other comments from the city council? Okay. City council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, July 12th, 2016 at 5:00 PM. We're also having a.
A special meeting on June, the, July the 7th, excuse me, at?
6th or 7th.
Yeah. It's at, no, it's at 5:00.
5:00.
5:00. July this?
July the 6th, 5:00, special meeting.
Special meeting.